The hour of six o'clock having come and gone, we'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:11 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Here.
Here.
For the record tonight, Alderman Wilson and Alderman Ramon Williams have excused First, Matt on the agenda, I would like everyone to invite everyone to stand and please for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Stokes up for a word of prayer before we commence with our agenda.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Let us pray. Our God and Father, how we thank you, how we look to you in pause to give you thanks for our life, our health, our strength. We thank you for keeping us in our minds. We thank you for keeping us with reasonable portion of health in our bodies. Tonight, God, we would ask that as we turn towards this Halloween festival, that you would protect the celebrants, you would protect the children who go out and trick or treat, that you would keep your hand of protection upon them, that the holiday could pass without incident. We thank you tonight for these men and women who you have called, you have appointed, who have been elected to serve these people. In Calumet City, we would ask that you continue to give them wisdom, teamwork, a spirit of community. We ask tonight, God, that these newly commissioned officers who have taken their oaths tonight, that you would keep your hand of protection upon them, and that no weapon formed against them would be able to prosper, that you would keep their families and continue to keep their pardon me, families safe and to keep them safe as they serve the community. And lastly, your word declares to us that we should trust you with all of our heart, lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our path. We give you praise and thanks in Jesus's name. Amen.
At this time, we'd like to invite any resident up on their public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda tonight? If you'd please step up to the mic, please.
My name is Paulette Nelson, and I reside on 1300 Block at Imperial Avenue. We've been having some problems over there regarding the tenants that are not taking in the garbage cans like they should. Some of them I left out week, maybe two weeks, and the possums, the squirrels, you know, they're all in the garbage can. They have the garbage all over the street, and I did mention it to a couple of the residents. One lady did take her recycle in, and I explained to her recycle is not every week, it's every other week. So, I did put down the addresses, and we also have an abandoned car. I have called the police station twice, 1314 Imperial Avenue. It has no sticker back or front, and it does have a police tow sticker on there, a red sticker on the window. I called back, the officer told me that the car have to be out there at least 10 days. Well, it's been almost a month, and the car is still sitting there, and it's in front of the house that is vacant.
Thank you. Tonight, so we have in the back our deputy commissioners. If you guys can please get our information and take care of that. And Chief Kolash, if you can get our information regarding the car, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address public comment? Please step to the mic.
John Rebacki, I live on Burnham Avenue. Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend you and the whole city council for paving Burnham Avenue. I've lived here like 40 years of my life, and I never seen that road paved, and I want to give you a big thank you. Now, next year, please do in front of my house, south of River Oaks Drive to the river. I appreciate it. No, it was bad by Lucian stuff. It was bad. It was bad. My side, next year, please, please, next year. Another thing, is there anybody here from DPW?
Yes, the deputy commissioner's in the back.
My brother's been having, I've called the city like three, four times about my brother's alley. He lives between 164th and 165th Street, and the alley, you can put a boat in some of the, in some of the holes. Now, I mean, it's good if you're not speeding down the alley 5, 10, 15 miles an hour, but if you're going down the alley and there's a pot, and there's a bunch of water in there, you're gonna blow your shocks or your tires. So, please, get down there before it gets windy and get that alley. I called two, three times. They paved, they did the other one north of 164th about two months ago, and they just neglected mine. So, I would appreciate that. And the only other thing I want to say, Mr. Mayor, is I came here one year ago with the music, and I talked to the police department earlier, and we're still working on the music coming from the cars and from the residents, but it's been going on for one year now. I came here last Halloween, and hopefully, we get it resolved with these new police officers getting on the street. We get some radar cars out there, we get some people tagging these cars going 70, 80 miles an hour down Burnham Avenue in front of my house. And you're doing a hell of a job, you guys. The only other thing I want to say, next time, when you have your pickup at the DPW, we used to have it in April all the time for the scrap, paint. I got it in my newsletter like a week or two after you had the pickup at DPW, where you pick up the light bulbs and you take the shredder and stuff, and I think I should've got that letter maybe a month earlier so I known to take it there. We discussed it with the alderman the one time, that the lady used to do it every year by DPW, and you guys stopped doing it in April. And that's really the only other thing I wanted to say. Thank you for doing a good job, and we're gonna get this situation situated before I die, hopefully in Cal City. We'll get this loud music taken care of. Thank you again, and I hope I'm not coming back every other week. Thank you again, people. Have a good night.
Keep coming back. We have the deputy commissioners in the back. You talk to them? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address public comment? If so, please step to the mic. You can step to the mic, sir.
My name is Joaquin Vasquez, resident of Calumet City for 29 years. I'm staying at 590 Hirsch Avenue. We all, the neighbors there, have a concern about this abandoned place which used to be the cleaners at the corner of Burnham and Memorial Drive. We all talk about, but nobody seems to do anything or come to get the right info about the status of the place, what is going to happen to it and when. It's a safety hazard there. People just throwing garbage, even oil, you know, from oil change from the cars. You can see over there, if you go through the alley, you can see all their oil being thrown over there at the abandoned place.
Well, if you can, Deanne, if you can get his information, and we'll make sure we take care of it, and we'll work with Alderman Navarrete on the issue as well. It's in the first ward, correct, Alderman? Yes. So, Deanne, if you can get his information. Is there anyone else who would like to address public comment? Please step to the mic. Good evening.
Mayor, they put up "Snow Route" signs yesterday morning. Was this well thought out? When they said for people, two inches of snow, they gonna start towing people's cars from in front of their houses? I don't think that was well thought out. They just took Calhoun if this is gonna be the model for this snow route. This gotta be well better thought out than this because two inches of snow? What about if you get in bed asleep and they drop three inches of snow outside, and they coming along with tow trucks towing people's cars? Some people have, especially on my block, they have garage, they have, some have half driveways, some don't have garages at all. I'm handicapped to a degree where if it's two inches in front, it's two inches in the back. My alley's not paved. So, where you gonna put your car?
If you can, we're gonna get your information, and I will just say this, the routes, the signs, we had to put up by law, and we are gonna do a voter education or resident education where we're gonna explain the process for our snow routes. The signs were put up, and our new snow plan is to make sure that we have all of our streets clean. So, we will be getting in contact with you and also doing resident education about the new plan for the snow route. We want to make sure our streets are clean and they're safe and cars are moved.
Well, we haven't had any problems on my, on my particular block with snow removal. Now, last year was a little slow, but basically, we don't have cars sitting there being covered with snow, and it's hard for people to drive through. No, we don't have that. But to make this a two-inch snow route, I think that's a little bit, that's a little bit too, that's a little bit too much. Because two inches of snow can drop in 20 minutes. You know, you sitting in the house and you sleep, and you hear, hear the blue, yellow lights, and they pulling your car, you know? That's not a fun thing to wake up to.
I understand. So, Chief, can you get his information? I can tell you this, it's not our goal to tow your cars, and it's not our goal.
And we're gonna get started fixing our streets.
I understand.
It's still on the books, paving the street, Calhoun and Pulaski Road.
We'll get you all that information. We're doing a lot of construction in the city, and through the help of the alderman and grants that we've gotten, we're doing a lot of construction on streets.
We got Alderman in the seventh ward?
Yes. This is your seventh ward alderman, Anthony Smith.
That's the invisible man. We never see him.
Listen, Alderman and Mr., if you can please, we're gonna make sure we get your information, Chief, so we can get all the information about the snow route. At this time, we'd like to, I'm sorry. Please step to the mic, sir. State your name.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Goldston. I'm on Calhoun. He's my neighbor at the other end of the block. I just want to reiterate what he said about the snow routes, and I want to speak on behalf of some of the women on my block who don't have a side driveway that I have or garage, and they have to enter their garage from the alley. Speaking on behalf of those women, there's nothing bothering me because I have a side driveway in the garage, but for those women to have to get up 10 o'clock at night when they hear that there's five inches of snow coming and drive to the next side street to park, I believe that's a problem. And very few people are gonna walk the, a half a block or drive a half a block and walk back a half a block at night, how should I say it, without protection. So, let me just leave it at that. So, it's important. So, I appreciate, we look forward to the information that you're gonna send out.
Yeah, thank you.
Please send it out before the first snowfall.
We will, we will. Thank you, everyone, who participated in public comment. We do appreciate your comments and look forward to resolving any issues. We do have not only the input of the alderman, but we're gonna make sure that we get all the information that was requested tonight, and Chief, and Deanne, if you can make sure you get the information from the residents. Next item on the agenda are approval of minutes. Before that, is there anyone else who'd like to comment during public comment? I don't want to miss anyone. Thank you, everyone. Next item, item five on the agenda are approval of minutes. Do you have the minutes before you? Did anyone have any questions about the minutes for, that's still stated on the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as still presented on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith.
Second.
Second. Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Reports of standing committees, Finance, Alderman Gardner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams did not have a report tonight. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee had a committee of the whole meeting October 26th where we discussed several items, those being, we discussed possible action and ordinance that will address short-term rentals, i.e. Airbnbs. We discussed an ordinance that will address the squatter issue that we have within the city. We discussed an ordinance that will strengthen illegal truck parking that's happening on our residential streets. We discussed an ordinance that will create a senior citizens committee. We also discussed the implementation of a crossing guard program, and we discussed zoning board of appeals decision on two properties. Four of these items appear on tonight's agenda under resolutions and ordinances, items one, two, six, and seven. That is all. Mayor, if anybody have any questions, contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman, Alderman Wilson, she does not have a report. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick announcement that the leaf program will begin on October 31st. We ask that residents sweep those leaves to their parkway, do not sweep them into the street. In case we do have a rainfall, we don't want those leaves clogging up our sewers. But again, our leaf pickup program will begin October 31st. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, I'd like to start the, my report with, we had several hardworking people who have passed away at City Hall this last month. October has been a revealing of God calling His warriors home. Many of you know, Robert F. McGee was not only an IT person here in Calumet City, but he was my best friend. He was a Calumet City resident for years. He passed away October 6th, and I want to thank the residents, my colleagues, for all of their calls, for their support, for his family, for the city, and for a celebration of his life and a celebration of his family. So, I would ask for a moment of silence and ask everyone to stand. For a moment of silence for Robert F. McGee. Thank you, everyone. If we can remain standing, we have two other city employees who passed away, and I will ask Alderman Patton to not only mention their names, but also let's say a prayer for their family after we're done. Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two former city employees that have both passed away in the last year. The first one is Hector Benning, over at our Home and Works Department for a long time. He's one of the best operators that he had over a couple of years, and always had the ability around, tried to pass away, and over his brother and his, so the wife over at the D. Center, so we can both, both the, as well as the family of Ralph Burnham, who was a longtime water operator here for water, and he's prepared to be moved over to the side of the town, to pass away.
Thank you. You can have a moment of prayer, silence for the family as well. Next several items, just want to mention that this upcoming Monday, October 31st, is Halloween. Tonight on the agenda, we do have Halloween hours, which will be 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We'll ask all families to please practice safety. Please, let's watch out for the children that will be out in the community. We do have two safe events for residents to attend. The first event, Sunday, October 30th, the Calumet City Library will have Halloween Bash from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM for all residents to attend. There'll be plenty of candy, plenty of entertainment. Also, at the library is early voting, so we want everyone to practice safety. We will have our police department and ESDA officials there as well, but we want to encourage everyone to attend not only this celebration, but Alderman Tillman and Alderman Williams and I believe Alderman, Alderman Wilson have an event on the 31st that Alderman Tillman will announce as well. So, we have safe events for families to attend. We would ask everyone on Halloween, please turn your porch lights on, even if you're not giving out candy, just make sure that the blocks are lit up for the kids and also for the parents who are gonna take their kids out trick or treating. So, again, the hours are 3:00 PM to 7, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and we'd like everyone's support in making our community safe with our kids. City Council reports, Alderman Smith?
Thank you. Just want to remind the residents that the November Town Hall meeting will be November the 19th at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center at 24 State Street from 10:00 AM to noon. If there are any questions, please contact the office at 708-891-8197, or email asmith@calumetcity.org.
Thank you, Alderman. I also forgot to mention, you heard a gentleman came up talking about Burnham Avenue. So, we did get not only $8 million for Burnham Avenue, we got $4 million for Pulaski Road. The construction has started on Pulaski Road. We also got money from the state of Illinois. If you go down 159th Street, 159th Street, construction has been completed. So, as you can see, we, we've gotten a lot of money to get these roads and our streets repaired, repaved, resurfaced, but we have a, a long-term plan to make sure that all of our streets are prepared. If you go down Pulaski, the construction is already started, so we will be sending out notices to everyone that surrounds Pulaski. When I got first got in office, I think that was some of the things that the alderman, one of the, one of the streets that was always mentioned was Pulaski Road and all of those bumps. So, now that we're gonna repair it, we want to not only thank the city council, but also thank the governor, I.D., who gave the city the funds, but our engineering team that helped us get the funds, and our economic development team to help us get the funds. Are there any streets that I'm missing, Ken?
So, we are finishing up Buffalo Avenue, is buttoned up and doing the final restoration there, so that'd be the last one for the season. And for those residents who are wondering why it's taken so long, there's been, we had a big, major strike that we had to deal with, as well as a shortage of concrete, but we plan to get that done before Pulaski, done before Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Patton, city council report?
Thank you. Just one quick item. Alderman Tillman touched on it in his committee report, but we did have a meeting last night where we began discussions about the potential of returning to the city crossing guard program, particularly in spots throughout the city where our students are faced with, you know, a higher degree of danger crossing the street to go to school. You know, I, I started reaching out to the six different superintendents that represent school districts that at least, if they're not wholly contained within Calumet City, service portions of Calumet City were in the process of setting up a meeting between the city council, the city administration, and those six superintendents to start having conversations about what that might look like in terms of, you know, a partnership between the various school districts in the city to potentially bring back that program to make it safer for our, our children to, to walk to and from school. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Appreciate you taking this project on because I know it's important to you, so I really appreciate that. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner, city council report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly remind the fifth ward residents to continue to contact my office with any issues, concerns. I can be reached at 708-891-8195. I want to thank the Public Works Department for their quick response and grading few of the alleys throughout the fifth ward. A lot of the residents called and complained about potholes throughout those various locations. They were graded within the past week, and I would like to thank the Public Works Department. Last but not least, my office is gonna be holding, hosting a Veterans Resource Fair Wednesday, November 9th. It's gonna be held at the American Legion, 20 hours of 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Light refreshments will be served. Any of the other aldermen or any attendees present tonight, you are encouraged to invite veterans whom you may know that could probably benefit for some of the resources. Also, we're gonna be having our ward meeting on the 14th of November. It's gonna be held at the Jesus Shepherd of Souls Parish located 768 Lincoln Avenue. Refreshments will be served there also. It's gonna be between the hours of 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Please encourage your neighbors to come out. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor touched on this earlier, but myself, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Williams, and Alderman Smith is hosting our annual trunk or treat this Monday, October 31st at 4:30 PM. It'll be held in the parking lot of Caroline Sibley at 1550 Sibley Boulevard. We've been doing this event for a number of years, and it's been growing. It proves to be a safe alternative to traditional trick or treating, so if you want to participate with your children, come out at 4:30. We also encourage everybody to come out, and even if you don't have children, you can decorate your car, put candy in the back, pull up, open your trunk, and then, you know, help us pass out candy to the children that do show up. Fortunately, last year, we ran out of candy, so hopefully, that doesn't happen this year, but we do encourage folks to try to come on time because of that. So, again, that is this Monday, October 31st, 4:30 PM in Caroline Sibley's parking lot. Also, November 8th is an election, and Downey Park Field House is used as an election facility. We do encourage everybody to go vote, but because of that, our November 7th Town Hall meeting is actually canceled because we do not have access to it the day before the election. So, we'll have our next election the first Monday of December. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. First Ward, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick thank you to State Representative Marcus Evans for hosting his town hall this past Saturday in the first ward here in Calumet City at the VFW Post 8141, the newly remodeled hall that's available for rent at the VFW if anyone needs a space, but thank you, Mayor, for also coming out and the clerk's also, clerk as well. But thank you, Mayor, for also coming out and the clerk's office represented as well. Good conversations, of course, were had. So, just wanted to say thank you to State Representative Marcus Evans. And then, a quick announcement, too, on today's agenda to address one of my residents, Joaquin mentioned about the dry cleaner on Burnham and Memorial. We do have an item on the agenda today for no cash bids to allow us a process. If I'm not mistaken, Mayor, you could chime in on it. But give us a better pathway forward to acquire properties through no cash bid that might be available. So, we'll certainly look into that address as a potential candidate for the program to acquire that property, maybe clean it up and find a developer for that property. It certainly is part of the Burnham Avenue Revitalization Plan that can be found on the city's website. There are renderings for that property, what it could be. So, hopefully, we can move forward with that as well. But that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
And also, the Alderman helped, not only helped us get money for our Burnham Avenue Revitalization Program, our grant that we got, I will call up Val and Chief Kolosch now. I need you guys to come up and address the item on the agenda with the no cash bid, and then also Chief, address the announcement for our COPS grant. And I can say that through the Alderman, we have been aggressive in going after vacant property. We've been aggressive in going after businesses that don't keep up their property. But we've also got a lot of letters of intent of businesses that want to come to Calumet City that are in the Pike that the Alderman have approved. But on our agenda, every council meeting, we have businesses that come before, new businesses that we're bringing to the city. So, everyone, this is Val Williams, Community and Economic Development. Val is going to talk about the item on the agenda for a no cash bid ordinance that we have before us.
Good evening, everyone. You may remember at one time, that program was available to the city through the county. It worked directly through the county, and that's some years ago, and it kind of fell off. It means that the city has the first opportunity to acquire tax delinquent properties, whereas other folks, non-government entities, would have to bid on it, bid on paying a portion of the taxes back. Our no cash bid availability means that the only costs to the city are court costs, title costs, and attorney fees. So, the average pin for us to acquire a property is somewhere between $8,000 and $15,000. So, it's a really good opportunity for us to do that. The other reason why it's important that we get a hold of these tax delinquent properties, when we're establishing TIF districts and we have a property that is tax delinquent, that is below zero, that pulls on our viability to increase increment. So, as we move forward, please think in terms of this. We worked with the Cook County Land Bank. We worked with the South Suburban Land Bank, and they have been really good to us. They really have. They would convey properties to us with the same no cash bid process for their costs. So, it was a win-win, and our attorneys advised us to go in that, to continue in that realm. However, they found that they weren't making money. And as the Mayor will tell you, they kind of doubled, tripled, and quadrupled the prices for the city to acquire. That's when the Mayor advised that we should proceed back with the establishment of the no cash bid process. Thank you.
Any questions of the program? Val? Thank you. Thank you, Val. Chief Kolosch?
Sure. A lot of rebuilding here in Calumet City, and that rebuilding doesn't stop with just the city streets and everything. We've done a lot with our Police Department, and a lot of that is thanks to the grant. Before you guys, before you today, you see the grant on the agenda here. That's for $1.4 million. That covers five new police officers. Earlier before some of the folks got here today, we just sworn in five new police officers. And the good thing about this, typically, this COPS grant is only awarded every other year or every third year. Is that correct, Val? Where'd you go?
Yeah, since what you reviewed, one year, one year.
Yeah. One point, yeah, $1.2 million in 2021. And a no-match grant this year of 1.4. These grants are typically every other year, every third year. So, we've made some significant progress, and that's thanks to Val and Richard Beck here. You guys have done a phenomenal job, and it's truly appreciated by all of us. It's going to offset a whole lot of taxpayer dollars, let's put it that way. And we thank you for that. So, $1.4 million this year for five new officers. So, very excited about that, and thank you for your work. Thank the council. Thank the Mayor for approving the hires of the officers and helping us rebuild this Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item eight are informational items to be placed on file. Has everyone had opportunity to review the informational items? If so, is there a motion to approve the informational items as so stated?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The motion passes for accept the informational items. Item number nine are new business items. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the new business items, A1 through 5 on the agenda?
Sorry, Mayor. I just had a quick question about item number three. Just, I guess, for my knowledge, do we know if this comes out of MFT funds, this item?
This is a request by Alderman Williams, so if we can approve, I guess, we'll check.
Yeah, I'll approve it, but I was just wondering out of curiosity.
Yeah, we'll check on that, Alderman. Get you an answer to that.
I make a motion to pass new business items, A1 through 5?
We'll get you an answer, Alderman.
That's fine, yeah. Can I make a motion to pass new business items, A1 through 9, or 1 through 5, I'm sorry?
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Madam Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
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 Item B are building permits. Before you have the building permits, I'm sorry, new fence construction under building permits. Are there any questions regarding the fence permits before council? If not, is there a motion, Alderman Tillman, regarding new fence?
So moved.
Motion made to approve the new fence items on the agenda by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Padden. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes to approve the building permit. Thank you, Alderman. See resolutions and ordinances. Alderman Tillman, do you want to take 1 and 2 separately?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, Mayor, if we can take 1 and 2 separately. It'd be appreciated.
Item 1 on the agenda is an ordinance, rezoning property at 1900 State, City of Calumet City. Alderman Tillman? Is there a motion to?
I'm not making a motion. I'm not, no, I'm not making a motion. I don't want to pass it.
So, is there a motion to?
I mean, I don't know what everybody else wants.
So, do we want a motion to deny it, or do we want a motion to table it? So, the correct item on these items, since they appear before?
Yeah, if it just dies, it's likely.
So, for the record, item 1 on the agenda, there's not a motion. There's not a second on item number 1. Due to that fact, item number 1 dies, and there's no official action on item 1, which is the rezoning. Item 2 on the agenda is ordinance of rezoning. 317 Memorial Drive. I will direct the same to the Alderman. Is there a motion for action on item 2 on the agenda? Seeing no motion and no second on item number 2 on the agenda, item 2 on the agenda dies for a lack of motion, fails for a lack of motion, and will be so directed. Alderman, do you want to take item 3 through 7 together?
Yes.
Can I make a motion for discussion on item 3, Mayor? I'm sorry. Item 4?
Let's, so let's do item 3 first. So, item 3 on the agenda, is there a motion on item 3? Motion to approve item 3 on the agenda by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Padden. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on item 3?
Yes.
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 Item 4 on the agenda is a resolution regarding rescinding the agreement with J&amp;T Group. Can we make a motion and a second and then for discussion, Alderman?
Motion to a discussion on item C4?
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Alderman Gardner, seconds. Alderman Padden, I mean, sorry, Alderman Navarrete, you're recognized for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing the documents, I just want to be clear. We were rescinding a previous agreement. It seems like we're replacing it with a HUD outlined agreement, which is very robust, and I agree with. I think it's a very well put together agreement. The only issue I had, I think, that it was, there was a caveat in there that the, that the redeveloped properties can only go to first-time homebuyers. Now, at the original agreement, you know, we said that we didn't want redevelopers coming in here, redeveloping properties, and then having rentals. We would like homeownership. But do we have to, are we limiting to just first-time homebuyers? Or just any homebuyer, as long as, you know, they're an owner? Is this program now just shifting it towards just first-time homebuyers?
So, what's before us is the same agreement. Part of the amendment, the properties that we gave to this program, when they went out, they discovered that two of the properties had squatters, which the city went to remediate. We got the squatters out. I believe the second property, there was an issue that the Police Department got involved in. And then, the third property, there was another issue with. So, this agreement is replacing those three properties that, I guess, the city reacquired. Val, you want to come up and give more detail on the properties? So, we did get our Police Department in. We secured the one or two of the locations, but this is replacing those three addresses.
Each time they come up for an amendment to the agreement, it is always Exhibit A. We are having so many problems with identifying abandoned properties, and as they move forward in the process, something is wrong, whether we have squatters or the land bankers involved. However, I will tell you a couple of them that I did not have to bring forth. Is any time I contact the land bank and I say, "The city is interested in this because of that," they stop, and they allow the city to move forward with that. So, we have had some assistance with the land bank. But each time, if we come back again, it's only to amend the address of the property on Exhibit A.
Thank you. So, this is only an amendment. The only change here is to Exhibit A, not to any of the terms, I guess, for the, okay. So, that first-time homebuyer was in there in the original. I probably just missed it then.
Yeah, yeah, the same program that we talked about, it is in there.
Okay, so if we wanted an opportunity to, we could change that, I guess, in the future. If we, maybe through discussion, if the council would wish, I guess, change that to just homeowner, not first-time homeowner, or is that a part of the HUD program, that we have to have that? That caveat?
Well, the term first-time homebuyer is a slang, you know, so to say, to give opportunities. But I do know there, you know, any qualifying buyer could be considered. But it's kind of like a thing, you know?
Got you. Okay. Thank you, Val. Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine with the item. If anyone else had any questions, thank you.
Any further questions while we're under discussion? If not, Alderman, can you make a motion on item 4 on the agenda?
Motion.
Motion was for discussion.
Yeah.
Motion to approve made by Alderman Tillman. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Motion for, item 4 is approved. Item 5, 6, and 7, can we take those together, Alderman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5, 6, and 7 as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Padden. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. At this time, we would like to go into a brief executive session to discuss the employment of a specific individual pending litigation. This executive session will be brief. The public, you guys are still welcome to stay around so we can come back and finish the business. We have several items to finish. If you want to wait around, please do. So, is there a motion to enter into executive session at 6:57 p.m.?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Gardner. We will be in executive session, everyone, and we will come back and finish the business. Keep back to the regular order of business. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 7:04 p.m.? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor? We are back in regular session at 7:04 p.m. We have financial matters on the agenda. I believe Alderman Gardner or Treasurer Harker, there's a correction?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, under Financial Matters, number 10, the motion should include the vendor's name, which is Fire Service. The amount of the, is correct, but the vendor's name is Fire Service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Are the?
Item number 10.
Item number 10. So, Alderman, you have, before you, items, Financial Matters, D1 through 28. Besides the correction and amendment, are there any other corrections? If not, Alderman Gardner, can you please make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to items 1 through 28 as so amended.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner to approve items 1 through 28, and second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Navarrete?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you. Just a happy Halloween and safe Halloween to everyone. Thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman?
I just want to send my condolences to the families of, you know, the three people who lost their lives that was discussed earlier in this meeting. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Gardner?
Again, I would like to extend my condolences to the families of the former employees of the city in their loss. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Padden?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one other passing that was not directly Calumet City-related, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention Tom Karmick, who was, who really helped shape the Illinois judicial system over the last 20 to 25 years, working with judges and judicial candidates across Cook County in particular, but also working very closely with Sean Tenner and the Mayor and his capacity as state representative to bring the Weisenthal Center Mobile Museum to fruition. Passed away unexpectedly last week, and, you know, there was a very great memorial service for him earlier this week. I know he'll be missed by, you know, myself especially, because he was also a very good friend of mine for a number of years, but just want to pass along my condolences to Tom's family.
years. But just want to pass along my condolences to Tom's family, in particular, his brother. And then, the only other item tonight, Mayor, is I'd also like to, on a much happier note, I'd like to wish my, my son, James, a happy fourth birthday on Saturday. I still refuse to believe that he's not turning 1 on Saturday, but here we are.
Well, and, you know, Tom Karmick was a beast. He was a political beast. He, he not only helped the first transgender, gender judge get elected, but he helped and he stood for judicial fairness. And he was a beast. He, he stood on the right side of justice, and, you know, he will be missed, and I would ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence for Tom.
For anybody that didn't know Tom, or never had the opportunity to meet him, at the memorial service on Monday, everybody that, that knew him well had an opportunity to get up and speak. And I think the most prescient description of Tom was given by Eric Millenius, who was chief of staff for, former 43rd Ward Alderman in Chicago, Michelle Smith. But he described Tom as a constant black rain cloud with a heart of gold. And I think anybody that knows Tom knows just how prescient that is, because he was crabby all the time, but he was, he would never, he stood, as the mayor said, he stood on the right side of justice. If, if a candidate he was working with, you know, started to veer even a little bit, he walked away, and he wouldn't stand for that. So, thank you.
That's right. Never met a man who ate a beef sandwich angry. So, that was Tom. And that was him. So, thank you, Alderman. We will have resolutions for all the families at the next meeting, just so we can honor them correctly, so we would invite the families. What's the time? There being no further business to come, I'm sorry, Alderman Smith, I'm sorry.
Just want to reiterate my condolences to the families of those former city employees on their losses. Also, want to reiterate, the monthly seven ward meetings are every third Saturday at the Calumet City Public Training Center at 24 State Street. If you have any questions on that, please contact the office. You can email at asmith@calumetcity.org, or contact 708-891-8197. Thank you.
All right. So, there being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:11 PM?
So moved.
Motion made by, who made the motion? Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.